Good evening. I'd like to call the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the University Heights City Council, or Mrs. Thomas, we call them all.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Ms. Marshall?
Here.
Ms. Weiser?
Here.
All members are present. Will you please join me in the pleasure of the presidency? I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Next is the reading of the disposal of the journal. We have a set of minutes from December four, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion? So, motion approved by Ms. Weiser. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I have the confidence.
Second by Mr. Rock. Mr. Rock, you have a vote.
There was a point in here. It was during council report, Mr. McConville stated about submitting the budget. He mentions the word March thirty-first, but it said March thirty. Just make sure it reads March thirty-first.
What was that under? For the communication from council?
Yeah.
But disciple?
It's from page four.
Page three.
Page three, now that. That was our comment.
But disciple by March third?
Three firsts.
Oh, that's the third first.
Very good. Are there any other comments? Mrs. Wise?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that Ms. Thomas had my corrections at least.
Are there any other corrections or notes to the record? There are any sense? There are none further. Mrs. Thomas, we call them all.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes, stand.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye. Very good motion here. Thank you. Next are additions and removals from the agenda and the proposed committee. Are there any additions or removals or referrals? Saying done, we will move on to comments from the audience. Speaker is going to take up to five minutes to address the city. If you're here to address the city this evening, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, say your name, address the record, and it will take up to five minutes. There are none, then we will move on to reports and communications from the mayor and taking of action their own. We have a busy agenda tonight. I want to give a preview to the first meeting of January, the January second meeting, among other things. I will have on the agenda three nominees for BZA, seeking council confirmation for the reappointments of R.A. Jaffe, Matthew Caleb, and Kevin Goodman. I will have a nominee for the vacant seat on the architectural review board, and I'll seek confirmation for that nominee, no in promise. We will have a nominee for city engineer. We are working out the contract details now. It will be the Wallace Panchar Group, who recently acquired McKay Engineering. Richard McKay and Michael McKay were the Steve Chuni and Joe Chuni of Middleburg Heights. The Mackays have all retired. The company continues on as part of the Wallace Panchar Group. Brenda Lockby will be our primary city engineer, contact with Kimberly Kerber being our second. Ms. Lockby has over twenty-eight years' experience in the field, and Ms. Kerber over twenty-nine years' experience, and is also a consultant city engineer in therapy park, Rocky River, and Middleburg Heights. As Wallace Panchar expands in our region, I'm excited to bring on a growing firm that is as concerned about the environment as it is about engineering. Who views designs not simply in terms of function, but also beauty. I'm also excited to have a new, albeit experienced engineer for University Heights as her first assignment as the primary at city engineer. Service Director Alan Pangton was essential to the process, being licensed GP himself and a former traffic engineer for the community. Of the three firms that submitted the statements of qualifications, we both ranked Wallace Panchar as our top choice. Outgoing city engineer Joe Chuni is advised, and he has pledged his cooperation in helping the city to transition to Wallace Panchar. Joe Chuni has served distinction in University Heights for over thirty years, and has he continues to work for GP as a city engineer in the future, and now in Middleburg Heights in twenty twenty-four and beyond. He will be around to help effectuate a seamless transition. Turning to some other imminent business, while this is far from my final council meeting or final mayor's report, this is my final council meeting as the presiding officer. I supported the charter amendment, the change presiding officer from mayor to vice mayor. Other than who has the gavel, what else should change? The agenda will be compiled by our clerical counsel with the assistance of the mayor, the vice mayor, the law director, and various administrative department heads. This will continue when that makes sense. Justice will make sense when the mayor continues to sponsor legislation. We place it on the agenda for consideration. Notwithstanding all of that, it simply makes better sense that council provide preside over its own meetings, and that the vice mayor and not the mayor be the president of council. I could be sentimental about it, but I'm happy to pass the count, just as I did for BZA in twenty eighteen. I would be remiss, however, if I did not mention that when the charter review permission approved and advanced to council, change in presiding officer, it also approved and advanced a change in how we select the law director. Currently, under the charter, the law director is chosen by the city council and serves the pleasure of city council. A proposed amendment that made that the mayor's nomination, subject to council confirmation, and that either the council or the mayor would have the power to terminate. Council declined to place that before the evil on November ballot. The last time we had a changed law director was nine years ago. Mayor Infeld was part of the selection process at that time. Two years ago, when McConville confirmed an addition to your contract, that discussion was had without my input, which was not such a big deal then, because I don't think that I would have suggested doing anything differently had it been asked. On tonight's agenda, you will see that we are renewing this new conbill for only three months. His last day of law director would be March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I thank Mr. McConville for his service these last nine years and for working closely with me these last six years. But now the city must select a new law director. Law director is to represent the city and not just the city council. The mayor works constantly with the law director, as much, if not more than any of the other directors or chiefs of administration who are selected by the mayor, which is why the charter commission so fit to propose a formal amendment to reflect that. I note that even under the current charter provision, the previous mayor was part of the selection process, and there's nothing prohibitive in that. As mayor, I seem to be part of the selection process this time as well for the next law director. It is essential to function in the city that the sole full-time elected official who works closely with the law director have a part in the selection and processes. Thank you. This concludes my one vote. Next are reports and communications from the city council and taking of action their own. Mrs. Wise?
Yes, thank you. I know that city council will be putting out the advertisement for a new law director. I'm sure whoever the vice mayor is will be inviting you to those interviews, and city council will be selecting a new law director before March thirty-first. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other reports from council members this evening? Yes, Mr. Cooney?
It's not the statement I'd like to offer. My apologies to the residents of the city for some of my absences from recent city council meetings. I've had a personal situation develop, which has impacted my schedule, and needed to be addressed. The issue is being resolved, and at this time, I do not anticipate any potential for conflicts in twenty twenty-four. I acknowledge that a lack of communication between myself, Mayor Brennan, and my colleagues. I spoke with Mayor Brennan, Vice Mayor Weiss, on the summer fifth, twenty twenty-three, regarding my situation. Although I admit my communication with the mayor and city council should have been better, it's I have permission for members of council to press the mayor and vice mayor for additional personal information during the December fifth council meeting. Recently, Mrs. Sacks has heard a story card about my attendance. I consider this extremely unprofessional as an attempt to humiliate, humiliate, humiliate me during teleconference meetings. All Mrs. Sacks had to do was just call, and I asked, why did you not just call? I'd like to remind Mrs. Sacks, when she was referred to as the dumbest member of council, I was the first and only member of council who approached the mayor directly and requested they consider issuing an apology. It is interesting, Mrs. Sacks chose to target my attendance, yet she did not offer the same courtesy to former members of Blankford and Gold, who were only this year, and had repeated absences. I'm sure all of us should be interested in Mrs. Sacks' bottom report on the twenty twenty-three council member attendance scoring, and a grave congratulations in advance to the council member who receives a good start. This concludes this one report.
Thank you, Mr. Cooney. Are there any other reports from council at this time?
Mrs. Sacks? Thank you. I have reached out to several, not several, a couple of people, and have had poor, if no response. I have had response from Mr. Cooney at times, and I will address this with Mr. Cooney after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Are there any other reports from council at this time? If there are none, we will then turn to the reports and communications of the directors in various departments. I'll excuse today many of them are on vacation at the time of the year, but we will start with Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. I did send out late this afternoon a series of financial reports that summarize city activity through the end of November, as opposed to going through those things line by line. I'll just give you a couple of highlights after you've had a chance to take a look at those things. If anybody has any questions, please give me a poll. Again, it's through November, so none of the budget adjustments that were done in the previous meeting or tentative adjustments proposed tonight are included amongst those reports. Through November, total revenue of the general fund, sixteen million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. For all funds, total revenues, twenty million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. Total expenses, year-to-date through November, general fund, fifteen million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. For all funds, spending this year, nineteen million, five hundred and six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So, the year-to-date surplus so far in the general fund, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. For all funds, again, this is the excess of revenue over expenses, one million, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. We started out the year with a general fund balance of six million, five hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. That has risen to the point where at the end of November, general fund balance is seven million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. And for all funds, we started the year with a fund balance, ten million, sixty thousand, fifty-seven dollars. At November thirtieth, that number is eleven million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. Some other numbers of note, the difference between revenue through the end of November last year and this year. This year, we're in a positive variance of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. It's a little under one percent increase. The increase for all funds is about one point two percent, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Our expenses this year as compared to last year, they're up five point nine six percent. For all funds, expenses are down from last year, three hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. And just a couple other points of interest. At the end of November last year, we had a investment portfolio balance of seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. This year, at the end of November, it's eight million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, we've increased our investments nine hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars, which is a little bit under twelve percent. And as I said, there was a series of reports that were emailed out to everybody today, so after you've had a chance to look at those, it is kind of technical, if you have any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions this evening for Mr. Kennedy? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Next is Director Paul, Mr. McConville.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say thank you to you, to the members of council, to all the department heads, and to the residents of the city for giving me the opportunity to serve as your law director. With my contract coming up, I just thought it was a good time to make a transition. There's some opportunities that I'm excited to take a part of within the context of my firm practice, and I think the city will benefit from a new voice and a new person sitting in this chair. So, again, I want to say thank you to all of you, and I'll probably have a little more to say sometime in March, as I tend to come sort of close. Other than that, I intend to provide you with a substantive report in executive session this evening.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Any questions for Mr. McConville?
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Mrs. Wise?
I just want to say, you know, I hope that we get a pretty in March, but that he wasn't spoiling this, and that could differ. I think you're an asset to the community, and your legal advice and your demeanor and just your professionalism was an asset to the city.
Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Move on to public safety, please. Mayor, report, panel reports, thank you, chief projects. Public safety fire, Chief Perko has been excused from this evening's meeting and is no report. Service Department, Mr. Pangton's been excused from this evening's meeting and he is no report. Building, Mr. Chin?
In light of the busy June dial pass, my.
Very good. And I know you were at the building meeting, so thank you for being there for that. So, no report for Mr. Chin tonight. Housing Community Development, Mr. Engelbrecht is on, is also excused from this evening's meeting. City Engineer, Mr. Chin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have one project left, and that is the Scarborough Canterbury Sanitary Relief Work. It's under construction. They're ninety percent done with the pipe installation. They would have completed this week, but the weather today, they took off, and I'm sure they're not going to be here tomorrow. They get as much done as they can this week. I was anticipating them finishing before the holiday, and then they take all next week off, so they won't be back till January second, restoration. They will get all the pipe in and all the connections in, and that's just a matter of the sidewalk and the street being repaired. I've had, not heard any complaints or any problems with the residents getting into their driveways after detouring, that's been most of, so, into my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chin. Any questions for Mr. Chin? Okay, thank you. Communications and communication, Mr. Cook is excused from this evening's meeting. Economic element, Mrs. Drucker.
I was not about to say no. Okay, just on December seventh, at a planning commission meeting across America, did have an application that they brought forward to resume four parcels on Warrensville Center Road from two to U seven. That was to replace a BP station that was voted down, five to zero vote, and a lot of the discussion was around what's going to happen, the possibilities that could happen on Warrensville Center Road, that entryway into the city. So, it was a very healthy discussion that we had, that was held at planning, but also to say it's not just a total vote down, but we need to see the bigger picture over there before you start zoning certain parcels, and what are we going to do in totality, especially taking in what we're going to be doing with the zoning code update. Secondly, I would just like to say thank you to Joe Chuni for, he has been instrumental in all the different projects I've worked on. And so, Joe, I just want to say thank you for your service, for your help to me, for the four years that I've been here, and I wish you well with your future endeavors. Another report I'll have will be done in executive session, and then finally, just want to wish everyone happy, healthy, and safe holiday season.
Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Very good. Thank you. And I concludes our reports from the various departments and directories. We now turn to item nine, being a disposition order, this is a resolution, so just consideration of agenda items, and we turn now to item A, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seven six, dedicating the gazebo at Walters Vincent Park in honor of Mayor Susan K. Infeld in recognition of her years of dedicated service to the city and her many accomplishments as mayor and as a member of the council. Mayor Infeld is here this evening, and we do have a resolution, which I may I'd like to read into the record. Whereas Susan K. Infeld served as a councilperson for the city of University Heights from January of nineteen ninety-six to December of two thousand and seven, whereas Susan K. Infeld serves the mayor of University Heights from January of twenty-ten until December of twenty eighteen, whereas in twenty-twelve, Mayor Susan K. Infeld held a town hall meeting on March fourth to introduce the concept of the purchase of the former Fuchs's Rocky School property to become the central park for the city of University Heights. Whereas on April sixteen, twenty-twelve, council approved Mayor Susan K. Infeld's purchasing, the former Fuchs's Rocky School site to begin to make that vision a reality. Whereas throughout the remainder of twenty-twelve, Mayor Susan K. Infeld guided the demolition of buildings in preparation of the site for use as a park. Whereas Mayor Susan K. Infeld organized a citizen committee to guide the planning for the new University Heights Park. Whereas Mayor Susan K. Infeld supported and worked for passage of the levy that funded the vision of the park that the committee developed. Whereas after its construction, Walters Vincent Park, formerly known as the Walt, has become a gathering place for children and adults of University Heights. Whereas the Walt has become an integral part of the lives of University Heights residents. Whereas Mayor Susan K. Infeld saw the gazebo as the centerpiece and focal point of the Walt, which is now used for concerts and events. Whereas the members of the University Heights City Council, whose names are fixed below, wish to recognize the work of Mayor Susan K. Infeld in making the Walters Vincent Park a reality, and wish to make the gazebo in honor of that foresight and goodness. The council fully directs the administration to prepare and fix to the gazebo a plaque for all to read that reflects this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of University Heights, Ohio, that section one, council hereby offers its sincerest thanks to Mayor Susan K. Infeld for her dedication, vision, and work in making Walters Vincent Park a reality, who names the gazebo at the Walt, the Mayor Susan K. Infeld Gazebo. And further directs the administration to prepare and fix the gazebo a plaque for all to read that reflects this resolution. Council wishes Mayor Susan K. Infeld well and all of her future endeavors. Section two, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in the meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and any of these committees that result in such formal action were in meetings open to the public and compliance with all legal requirements. Signed, City of University Heights, Mayor, and all members of council. Mayor Infeld, it is such a delight to have you here this evening, and I long ask to recognize you for your service, so I'm so glad that we are doing this at this time, and I'm sure that others have things that they would like to say as well. It has been a pleasure following you and your footsteps, and also going in another direction here in the city, but building upon all the great work that you did here. So, thank you, and delighted that we are recognizing you at this one. Who would like to throw in?
Thank you. If I say something? Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody here. Thank you very much for this recognition. I'm truly grateful and touched by it. Thank you especially to the council members who were here during the whole process, Michelle and John. It was a long process. I actually had the idea to establish a park at that site long before it ever happened. I met with Mayor Rothschild about it when I was deciding to run for city council over the nineteen nineties, and I mentioned it for what a great site that would be for a park, and then she gave me the background and the history, and said that when the Northwood School vacated the site, the school district had offered the property for sale for purchase by university, you know, it wasn't the right time. Thankfully, Fuchs's Rocky bought the school, brought in a wave of young families to the community, and when the property became available for sale in twenty-ten, I was mentioning to win before the meeting. I can't remember if Mr. Moore and Weiss approached me, or if I approached him about purchasing the property, but it was about a two-year process of negotiating, and I don't want to confuse necessarily all the dates that the mayor had mentioned in that proclamation, but we had two law directors. At the time, we had, I started this process with Tony Point, and then I think the park may have opened, but there's always, you know, with big construction projects, a lot of detail work afterwards. So, you know, Luke was really my right-hand person with a lot of that, and I also have to give a nod to the finance director. Dennis wasn't the finance director for me during that process. It was Larry Heizer, who's now in Detroit, but so many department directors were involved with this planning, the council, as you remember. It was a six-year process, starting in twenty-ten, and then the park opened in twenty sixteen. And so many of you had said to me before the meeting, and as I truly believe. And so many of you had said to me before the meeting, and as I truly believe, it's a wonderful addition to the community, and nothing makes me happier than to see little kids playing on the playground and riding their bikes. It's even fun in the summertime to see parents pulling a wagon with kids, and I get the sense, not that my kids are all grown, but they're trying to get their kids that are at their dinner, to tire them out so that they'll sleep well for the night. But, thank you so much for this recognition, and I also want to thank particularly, she's now here, Annie Rollinson. I know that behind the scenes, she advocated very hard for this, and I do want to say that Annie is somebody that I've known since I became involved in University Heights, getting the park and playground built to purpose park. Annie was integral to that process, and she's a wonderful person. She was somebody who was always ready, when Mayor Rothschild had a job, Annie and Elmer was been, were always the first people to say, "We'll do it, we'll volunteer." She served on so many committees in University Heights, and when she contacted me to tell me that she was doing this, and then shortly afterwards, I talked to Lynn, I was floored. So, thank you so very much, I'm truly honored, thank you.
We're not going to let you get the last word, Susan. You're right, Annie Rollinson, in large part, was a lot of the force behind this campaign. And out of all the people that I've met in University Heights, Annie Rollinson only sees the good, and she reminds us that we all need to try to remember that, because when we do, we see a picture that is much broader than, I think, our own, the personal lives. I think it's public servants, and I think you'd agree with this, is that everybody needs to know that it's good and where we screw up, and I think everybody prays, the good always outweighs the screw-ups. And one and for sure, ambling around the park is someone, I was continually struck by just how people interact with each other, and community can only happen when people can actually talk to one another and interact with one another, because that's how we discover how similar we are, even though we're all different. And I think on that one point, that park has become integral to pulling together the fabric of University Heights, so it certainly is an honor that's well deserved, and thank you for all the work you did.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Any other comments at this time? And if not, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So.
Motion by Ms. Wise, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion of the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King.
Ms. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cleary.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, resolution passes. We have two copies here that will be signed by all members of council and myself. I'm going to go ahead and sign now, we'll pass these around, and we will pause briefly to do that, and then present a copy to the mayor.
Yes, I know.
Yes, I know. We have this also, Mayor, we would love to take a picture of it with you all together, and we would also be happy to go ahead and frame this and bring it to you as soon as we have the frame, so. Next item on the agenda is item B, resolution 2023-85, recognizing the accomplishments of Joe Chiney upon his retirement as city engineer for University Heights. I'll go ahead and read this one into the record. Whereas serving under three mayors, Joe Chiney has dedicated most of his professional life making University Heights a better place to live as its city engineer. Whereas Joe started out working with his father, a former city engineer, and became city engineer when his dad retired. Whereas the city engineer does the heavy lifting for public works, including those things that residents take for granted until they do not work. Most are things critical for the well-being and efficient functioning of the city, but are hidden from view. Whereas Joe has used his talents to find unique solutions when money was tight, to ensure roads could still be paved and critical projects could be completed. Joe always found a way to get things done, and always had the best outcomes for the city in mind. Whereas Joe is not only a gentleman, but in nature, but a true gentleman in how he treats all that he works with and needs. Whereas Joe is a longtime former University Heights resident, and has actively participated in coaching youth soccer in Heights for decades. Whereas University Heights Council acknowledges the contributions Joe has made to all of us over his thirty-plus year career, and wishes him the best on his retirement. University Heights will miss him and his talents. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of University Heights, Ohio, that section one, council hereby offers its sincerest congratulations and thanks to Joe Chiney upon his retirement as city engineer for University Heights. For his decades of dedication and outstanding service to the city and its residents, council wishes Joe Chiney all of the best in all of his future endeavors. Joe, you will be missed. Section two is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that result in such formal action were in meetings open to the public and compliance with all legal requirements. Signed, City of University Heights, Ohio, by the mayor and all members of council. Mr. Chiney, thank you. Thank you for everything that you have done closely to Susan Drucker, you know, said it very well, and I will say that as well. You know, when I said that I was excited about what was coming next, that was not in any way a reflection of how very honored I have been to have worked with you and GPD and your staff, and the care and attention that you have given the city and have given the projects that we've worked on together, so, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you had a long agenda, so I'll be real quick. I do appreciate this resolution and all those kind words. Thirty-two years, where did they go? I don't know. As it said in the resolution, I served under three mayors, but I also served under several chiefs and directors, very talented, and they had the city's best interests at heart, all of them. So this weekend, I tried to think about all of those, and this is not official, this but, I went down here, start with the easy one, I worked for only two clerks at council, Kelly Thomas and Hetsy English, and I won't mention all these names. I worked under four law directors, or worked with four law directors. I worked with four police chiefs. I worked with three building commissioners, and they've had three representatives in that tax, so maybe it's six, that's true. I worked with six service directors, six fire chiefs, and I think I have all, because there are a number of interim in there, and there's some interim chiefs, I think I counted them all, and seven finance directors. Thirty-two years. You guys do the math, thirty-two years divided by seven, or six, or how much your longevity is? Anyway, I think I attended over six hundred council meetings. I think there are a possibility, probably of six forty or six fifty or something in those thirty-two years of the special committee council meetings, I can't count them all, but I know I attended probably about six hundred of them. Somebody asked me once, you know, or told me once, you know, you should write a book. You know, and I probably could write a very interesting book just about the council meetings, I wouldn't have to make it up, because you can't make this stuff up. It was a very interesting book. In closing, I do want to thank University Heights for having the faith and the confidence in me to continue to renew, write out a contract every year. I know that I honor my oath to faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge my duties as city engineer. I enjoyed working here, I loved the city of University Heights, I'm very proud of the work I did here. I'm also proud of all the problems I solved, and that's what engineers do, we're problem solvers. I never pretended to be the smartest guy in the room, because I'm not, but I am a problem solver, and when you guys came to me with problems, I could usually solve them, or find some resolutions, so. Thank you again for the resolution, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Any other like the floor? And if not, if you have to take a motion to approve the resolution.
I was going to say something. Joe, if you write that book, I'll have to tell everybody how you solved our tight money years ago by saying, "Oh, we'll only replace ten percent of the curbs," because there are few residents come looking for you. But it worked, and it kept us going, and that's, that's the way engineers think, if we can find a way and still get the overall job done, and it works, why not do it? So, thank you.
And here, I thought you were going to say the dip in the road and see your road.
No, no, I'll beat the devil up if it got fixed this time. That's an injury to Joe.
I actually thought of that, too. But, yeah, it's going.
And I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. We have motion to approve the resolution, by Ms. Wong, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Raab. Any further discussion? Mrs. Wise.
Yeah, I just wanted to let Mr. Chiney know that Lynn was the one that actually wrote the resolution and spoke to council members, so I thought that was important for him to know, and it's well deserved, and we will sorely miss you. I want you to know that all of council value you and your work, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Wise. If there's no further discussion, a motion for, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cleary.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Raab.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wise.
Aye.
Very good, motion carries, and we have two copies of our resolution, we're all signed.
And we'll frame those too, I hope.
We will frame.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Anyway, I think I attended over 600 council meetings. I think there are a possibility probably of 640 or 650 or something in those 32 years of the special committee council meetings. I can't count them all, but I know I attended probably about 600 of them. Somebody asked me once, or told me once, you know, you should write a book. You know, and I probably could write a very interesting book just about the council meetings. I wouldn't have to make it up because you can't make this stuff up. It was a very interesting book. In closing, I do want to thank University Heights for having the faith and the confidence in me to continue to renew, write out a contract every year. I know that I honor my oath to faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge my duties as city engineer. I enjoyed working here. I loved the city of University Heights. I'm very proud of the work I did here. I'm also proud of all the problems I solved, and that's what engineers do. We're problem solvers. I never pretended to be the smartest guy in the room because I'm not. But I am a problem solver, and when you guys came to me with problems, I could usually solve it or find some resolutions. Thank you again for the resolution and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. If any, may I like the floor? And if not, if you have to take a motion to approve the resolution.
Oh, this way. I was going to say something. Joe, if you write that book, I'll have to tell everybody how you solved our tight money years ago by saying, oh, we'll only replace 10% of the curbs. Because then a few residents come looking for you. But it worked, and it kept us going. And that's, that's the way engineers think. If we can find a way and still get the overall job done, and it works, why not do it? So, thank you.
And here, I thought you were going to say the dip in the road and see your road.
No, no, I'll be the devil, I'll get it fixed this time. That's an injury to Joe.
I actually thought of that, too. But, yeah, it's gone.
And I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. We have motion to approve the resolution by Ms. Wallace, your second.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Ross. Any further discussion? Mrs. Wallace.
Yeah, I just wanted to let Mr. Chiny know that Lynn was the one that actually wrote the resolution and spoke to council members. So I thought that was important for him to know, and it's well deserved. And we will sorely miss you. I want you to know that all of council value you and your work. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wallace. If there's no further discussion, a motion for, Mrs. Thomas, we call roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooley.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. And we have two copies of our resolution for all signs.
And we'll frame those two, I hope.
We will frame the...
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
So, before I proceed to the next agenda item, Mr. Kennedy has brought to my attention for items C and D, and then for item R, we have representatives, the chain of all of our items, C and D are next, but he is asked to be with due, Clemens Elson's representative, the first deal of who do we want on top of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to move item R to become the agenda item immediately following item D. So, the motion by Mrs. Sacks is seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooley.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
A very good motion carries. Thank you. Going now to item C, a motion for the approval of the renewal of the city's medical insurance contract for city employees of Medical Mutual of Ohio as proposed to include pharmaceutical benefits and vision coverage. Mr. Kennedy, although he was also representing the Fidelity Group. Let me do it before you say it.
Thank you. Well, personally, I think we need to amend the motion because we also have to recommend renewing the rates with Guardian as well.
Oh, yes. That is, that would be correct. Mr. Conville, is that something we can just amend when we make the motion? We need to amend the, we need to amend that. I think we need to make the motion. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Please, Mr. Kennedy.
Oh, just to summarize, our contracts for various employee health insurance contracts includes medical prescription, vision, dental, and life expire on December 31st, 2023. We have a healthcare insurance consultant with Fidelity Group. They assist us throughout the year with various issues related to our contracts with various carriers. And they also put together a recommendation and review of our contracts and look at some competitive options when the renewal period comes up. We're always on a tight schedule at this point in the year. We start the process in late September. Coming off a two-year contract with Medical Mutual, that's the primary expense of the health insurance for employees. This current year, there's a 0% decrease from the prior year. The proposal we received from Medical Mutual constitutes an 18.9% increase over the current rates. While that sounds fairly significant, there's a couple of items we should consider. Number one, inflation, the rates of inflation have gone up pretty significantly. So if you amortize that increase over the past 10 years, I think it's more reasonable. And we have some issues that I'll let our representative talk about in a moment. But we had 25 high claimants above $10,000 in claims. And those total for those 25 people came up to $1.2 million. And that's pretty much what we pay Medical Mutual in premiums. So they're operating at a loss. So we were expecting the prospect of an increase. Our initial increase was significantly higher than 18.9%, but we were able to negotiate that down. The total cost for insurance in 2024 for medical and prescriptions is estimated to be $1.65 million. Our current premium this year is approximately $1.39 million. So that increase next year will be $263,608. Now, those are not exact figures because we're reliant on group circuitry and what level of insurance individuals participate in. But it's a good estimate that our cost total, about $263,000. Dental rates through Guardian will decrease from our current premium, which is $69,408, $66,630. All the rates that were proposed were discussed with members of our healthcare committee. Those members are comprised of representatives of all the unions, police, fire and service, and a couple of folks from the administrative pool of employees. The consensus of that group was that we should take the renewal as proposed by Medical Mutual. And I could ask Mr. Lang, Josh Lang, here from Fidelity Group to give you kind of a little bit of background on the state of the industry and maybe the process we went through, including getting some other costs to prepare this proposal, too. So, and will you answer any questions?
Good afternoon, Josh Lang. I'm the Vice President, Public Sector Practice Leader for the Fidelity Group and assist the city in their consulting work as it relates to employee benefits for the city, right? I think Dennis is a very nice overview. So thank you for the opportunity and a couple of minutes here to help maybe walk through that process. The city has fully insured benefits, meaning that they pay a premium to the carrier. The carrier holds all the risk versus maybe a self-funded arrangement where the city would then pay a carrier an administration charge and then earn some of that risk. So just to be clear, the city of University Heights is under a fully insured contract with Medical Mutual, further medical prescription, vision, and then the ancillary coverage, which would be life and dental or health like Guardian. Through the planning of this renewal, we tried to get out ahead of it as early as possible. We did recognize, as Dennis mentioned, that there was some high claimant activity that was unusually high comparative to previous experience periods. So through those discussions and kind of analysis, we did perform what we would refer to as an RFP, which is a request for proposal. And we aggressively marketed the city's plan. What that means is that we went on to your current carriers, basically competitors, provided them all the information that they would need to solicit quotes and provide aggressive marketing back for us to present to the city. We did do that. The original renewal came in from Medical Mutual at a 29.9% increase. Through that aggressive kind of marketing for 2024, we received quotes from United Healthcare that were not competitive, meaning that they were higher than what Medical Mutual was proposing, and declined the quotes from Aetna and Cigna. So they took the city's risk and said, we're not interested, and did not provide a quote for 2024. Anthem, however, was the only competitor that did complete and submit a competitive quote as it relates to the benefits at about a 16.4% increase comparative to Medical Mutual, 29.9%. However, important to note, Anthem would not be able to administer the same benefits that are being administered and have the ability for your employees to elect. So while the rate was a little bit less, they would not be able to match the benefits, which frankly could cause some issues with your employees. We then took that competitive data back to Medical Mutual and asked them to revise their numbers, which I think Dennis, the finance director, elected to tell you that they negotiated that rate down to an 18.9%, which is where you stand now. We also did market and go back to Guardian, who decreased your rates on the dental and are holding your rates as they relate to the basic life and accident insurance. Medical Mutual is also going to hold the rate of proposed 0% increase to your vision. So based on that RFP process and negotiations with all the carriers, those were our recommendations to the city that they would renew all their lines of coverage with the incumbent carriers based on all the revised figures that have applied. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Any questions, Mr. Lang? Yes. Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you very much for negotiating on behalf of the city. So you work, I just want to understand, you work directly with Mr. Kennedy. Do you work with our HR consultant at all?
Typically, everything is run through the finance department. We do participate in your HR committee. I think we met a couple of weeks ago to go over basically what we discussed today to allow them the ability to understand and ask questions.
But that consultant has nothing to do with this? And no...
Frankly, I'm not quite sure if they're part of that committee or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Lang? Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
I would just ask that the motion be amended to recommend renewing with Medical Mutual for medical vision and prescription, and also to renew with Guardian for dental and life.
Very good. I would then ask for a motion for the approval of the renewal of the city's medical insurance contract for city employees of Medical Mutual of Ohio as proposed to include pharmaceutical benefits and vision coverage together with Guardian for dental and basic life insurance.
So...
The motion by Mrs. Sacks is seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion of the motion? Mrs. Ross.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, I guess the council's who know that I deal with benefit renewals, and I think it's really a great practice that there's a committee that renews this. You know, there's a lot of input, and they all have a discussion. And I think that's very beneficial to the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ross. Any further? Mrs. Thomas, we call roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooley.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
A very good motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you.
Okay, next is item D, a motion to approve the planning commission recommendation from the December 7th, 2023, planning commission meeting. It's the application from Paylo Architecture for Colwell YCM 2480 and 2500 South Green Road Parking Lot Expansion Projects in three parts. Part one, site line approval for the proposed parking lot expansion, new driveway to be located on residential parcel. Part two, approval of easement on three areas from the 30-foot parking setback department, so forth. The file by order 1274.2 received. I think the applicant is here to present. Would you please avoid the podium, say your name, address of the record, and you may proceed. Oh, yes, and because this is played by judicial, if you could swear to the word, Mr. Conville. You swear from the testimony you give today with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be glad.
Yes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
So we're actually looking at a pretty simple project here. The existing Colwell facility is a rather compact site line parking lot. And the two-way drive that loops to the south only has parking off of the north side of it. It's just a curb to the south. Now, the Colwell does own the residential parcel to the south of this. So we're proposing to do, right now, the driveway to the house runs alongside of it, and then does a 180-degree loop to a rear-loaded garage. What we're planning on doing is removing the driveway so we could extend 12 parking spaces in where the landscaping currently is, shift the landscaping over to the section that's between the existing garage and the new curb, and then install a new driveway that will go head-on right into the, what's now the rear of the garage that faces the street. We end up putting an overhead door on the front and then a man door and a window on the rear. There'd be fence that would run both sides to match what's existing now off the front and rear corners of the garage to try to get more landscaping. And the easement is that entire area for both parking and landscaping so that the landscaping would all be maintained on the same site.
Very good. Very good. Just to remind you, your Brian Paylo, Paylo Architecture.
Yes.
Yes, very good. Just want to make sure that got all the point. Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Oh, I'll just very briefly say, that planning commission, I was going to make the motion on all three parts of this, we have different seconds. One for Mr. Kasey, one for Mr. Rock, one for Mrs. Urban. This is a project where the applicant has worked with the administration, and we appreciate when projects are brought so that it can go through a process of the new design and is preliminarily to help make them the best applications they can be, in our view, before they come forward and are subjected then to further review by planning commission and city council. So thank you for doing that. I will note then that this application does have the back of approval of the city administration. So, thank you. Any questions or comments? Mayor, I would ask that council consider each of the three components separately since we do have a variance involved. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Rock?
I'll just note one more thing for the record. You may have mentioned it, if you didn't. The parking lot does go over the property lot as that easement, but the applicant owns the property on both sides. So, nobody else is impacted by that. So technically, the easement's being granted by the Colwell, one parcel ownership to the other. And of course, the easement runs with the property. So if for some reason someone did purchase the house, the easement would still remain intact until both property owners agreed to dissolve it.
Yes, I think that's a correct statement. Okay. There are three items here then for approval. If there's no further discussion, is there... There are three items here then for approval, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve the planning commission recommendation from December 7, 2023 Planning Commission meeting with respect to the site line approval for the proposed parking lot expansion, the new driveway to be located on residential parcel. Is there a motion? Subtle motion by, as far as there is, there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion on the motion? Second, Mrs. Thomas, you can call the board?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good motion, carriers. Next, with respect to the planning commission recommendation from December 7, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, ask for a motion to approve the easement.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Mrs. Marshall. Any discussion on the motion? Second, Mrs. Thomas, you can call the board?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good motion, carriers. Finally, with respect to the planning commission recommendation from December 7, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, we need a motion to approve the variance from the 30-foot parking setback department and support of the cop by order 1274.02C to... Is that a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Second, Mrs. Thomas, you can call the board?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Very good motion, carriers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Okay, next item on the agenda, we're probably taking one out of order, is item R, which is a motion to extend the human resources contract with Clemens Nelson for the period of 12 months from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023, and a non-actual receipt of $80,505. I know there's a representative of Clemens Nelson here, and I'm just handing that he brought aside out here for you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, and thank you for moving it up in consideration of the folks here from Clemens Nelson. Just some background, this last December, almost a year ago today, council approved by motion the extension to the city's agreement with Clemens Nelson for the period January 1 through December 31, 2023. To date, in 2023, we pay $39,592.50. The amount not to exceed the year was $48,000. Those costs have all been charged to a 2023 process. There's another in-process payment of $5,615 right now that will increase our year-to-date payments to $45,207.50. So currently, we have an additional $31,297.50 in invoices for the months of August through November of 2023. And allowing for an estimated invoice in December, projected total expense for this year, 2023, will reach $82,505,000. Allowing for the accrued spending authority that would be the open amount that's still on the purchase order that was generated at the beginning of the year, we will have $2,792.50 available to pay against any outstanding invoices. So that leaves us with a differential of $34,505 to potentially provide funding for all pending or estimated invoices as of today. I think council is aware that we had Mr. Michael Zelesnick as our representative from Clemens Nelson. He is no longer with the firm. We do have a couple of reps here that I'll introduce in a moment, but Mr. Zelesnick did participate in all four collective bargaining agreements, both discussions, negotiations, and appearances at council meetings, some of which were executive session. I do believe that the majority of the charges comprised, the cost overrun, are attributable to those negotiations. So without any kind of additional spending authority being granted, beyond that $48,000 that was provided for last December's motion, we won't be unable to process payment for pending invoices to serve windows. We have not conceded the amount, cut out the spending, given enough time, tonight called a good forty, but we will need some additional authority to pay some or all of the pending invoices. And if I could at this time, I could ask those couple of representatives from Clemens Nelson, Mr. Michael Esposito, and Ms. Melissa Fisco, they're aware of the situation and are here to answer any questions and give their particular and related outstanding accounts.
Sure.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Esposito, and Ms. Fisco, you voted for?
Okay, great. Just let me introduce, first of all, thanks for having us. Obviously, I usually don't like to have a meeting like this, because it's obviously there's something to talk about, and the budget and the projected allocation, and the actual appropriate funds are in line with cost. So no way likes to have this.
You do, you think it's the mic.
I'm sorry. All right, let's try that. Is that better?
Thank you.
Much better? Usually, people don't like to hear me talk so much. So this isn't the ideal meeting to be at, but it's one of the... Fortunately for me, I haven't had to deal with it much times in 22 years, coming up on 22, I've noticed since 2002. My guest is the own vice president of Clemens Nelson. We have these situations, they occur. I am here, Melissa Fisco, who's Assistant Regional Manager, and she will be the next in line to run one of these regions here, too. She is also taking over for Mike here, so we are interested in continuing the relationship. Thank you very much for the opportunity you've given us, and we want to reassure you that we are going to put certain controls in place to make sure this doesn't happen again. I will tell you that we, the council legislates and appropriates. They give the money, and that's the big thing, legislates, so we're not spenders, we don't just spend, we do what our clients ask us to do. And Mike got engaged in part in negotiations, there's also, you have to understand, too, in the HR world, there are day-to-day things that don't happen. You schedule consulting, and sometimes run into things, and that's a little bit of what happened here, and I think maybe we should have, you know, thrown out the caution flag much sooner and said, you know, we need to get this resolved or say no. I also think Mike, while he is certainly qualified to do these things, and he's got a lot of experience, you know, when you're dealing with clients saying, I want you to do this, I want you to do that, it's tough sometimes when you're in the customer service building, in business, to say no. Because you're trying to keep things moving, and everything can't just grind to a halt on a day-to-day operation, particularly if you have to do something that, you know, people are trying to get contracts settled, they're trying to get stuff done, you have a pre-disagreement conference that needs to be done, a timeline, grievance hearing that needs to happen, a timeline, and you're going to be part of that stuff, you run into some of those things. And that doesn't absolve us as the vendor to pay a little more attention to this, but if we're realistic on things, particularly in labor relations in HR field, sometimes this type of stuff does happen, depending on the amount of extra things that are going on. I took a look at the onsite, as to what you guys have incurred, just straight onsite stuff, and the onsite billing, including Melissa's time you were up here in December, is kind of right around, it's right about $40,000 to $49,000, slightly over, so that's not where the over just came. The over just came mostly from the negotiations stuff and some of the other input, day-to-day things. I will tell you, I guess a silver lining to this is while, you know, we're talking about the outstanding balances for '23 and potential '24, I don't think a '24 number would be anywhere close to the roughly '83 that you put it at. I think the onsite number was extremely close, and I think if you had up to 65 to just deal with the day-to-day, you know, other stuff that could happen, you know, grievance feedings, additional stuff and things like that, I think you guys would be good. And I will just tell you that we take it seriously, and I've talked a little bit with Dennis about this, and we are in a position to do, to hold ourselves to account and tell you guys that we are willing to step up and put some of this money back in your own pockets for this stuff, because I feel awful about this. And I don't like having these meetings, I hate them as a matter of fact, but it is what it is at that point in time. We did do the work, it was asked for, but at the same time, council being the funding authority, probably should have said, I can't come to these meetings, I can't do this until we make sure we got that covered, because our primary responsibility is to be there in that HR capacity, day-to-day side. So at that point in time, open it up and just ask them any questions. I get the sense that probably, as the authority, mayor's over there, you guys are the appropriating authority, you guys want, you know, want to know this stuff, so I'm here to answer the questions. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wise?
Thank you for coming. I mean, I'm just going to open up the question. I was very taken aback, this is the first time we've heard about this. I have a number of questions.
Sure.
Who gave the authority for Mr. Zelesnick to engage in the union negotiations? Because we pay a labor law attorney to go to them. To me, it seems like it's dumb. Yeah, and I was actually surprised in our executive sessions when he was there giving the report. So who gave the authority to go to those meetings?
I can't tell you what individual person told him to do it, because I wasn't here. I can tell you that in collective bargaining circumstances, it's this interesting dynamic. The way 4117 works is the chief executive of municipal appropriation is the official who's responsible for all of the party. However, on the flip side, council is responsible to accept or reject a fact finding or approve any negotiated agreement. So you had this, and I think it happened at Port Park about 15, 20 years ago, where, you know, the chief executive wanted to have a representative, and there's a question with the council about the representative, and the courts got involved, and they said, no, chief executive is picked, council is the appropriating authority, so they give you the money and pay. So you have that interesting dance that goes on. I can tell you that Mike wasn't there attending your meetings without any instruction from somebody, because he wouldn't have been. I don't know who exactly asked him to be there, I don't know if Jeremy did, I don't know if the mayor did, I don't know who did that. So I wish I had a better answer for you. I will tell, let me address this real quick. I don't know if this is what went on, too, but I had been involved in negotiations as representative and just as on a consulting basis, back to that channel, and occasionally I've had an assistant counsel by helping do some things that if they were to do them themselves, wouldn't have been as cost efficient. And also, what we have going with our, just the scope of the practice, like I represent Mayfield Heights Lenders, she represents Cleveland Heights right out in the corner. We can lay our hands on a lot of data very orgically because of the scope of places we represent, and sometimes that is actually more cost effective. So I'd be concerned about, obviously, like you referenced, duplication services, why do we have two people there? I get it. On the flip side, there may have been some things that Jeremy passed off to get together because it was more efficient and cost-effective to get the information and have you do it. I don't know if that's the case, and I'm making excuses for you, ma'am. So now I'm just going to, just want to mention that, because I wasn't there to explore the dynamic, and I didn't have any control over that particular thing.
Mayor, did you ask, did you ask him to go to those meetings?
I did ask him to go to those meetings.
So where was the oversight in the contract? This was our first year in the contract. You know, very careful with that budget here.
You're doing a good job. I heard the report, I hope, you know, and I will say this...
$34,000 over a contract is a lot.
Yeah, that is. I disagree with you. I disagree with you. It is more, it was, I didn't realize how much it accumulated, we're fairly late in this process. I will say that having Michael Zelesnick on the negotiating team with Jeremy yielded excellent results with regard to our collective bargaining agreements, and that Zelesnick's presence here generally, Clemens Nelson's presence here generally, has been most helpful with regard to resolving grievances, not having an arbitration, and cutting through, you know, there are many other aspects where money was saved because of the work that Michael Zelesnick did. We did not have to have the fact finding, we didn't have to have any grievances that went to arbitration, none of these things occurred. We had had arbitrations in the past, we hadn't had to spend on these items. And having our HR manager a part of the collective bargaining was, you know, essential, especially in the sense that it is Clemens Nelson who is here onsite to handle grievances, handle items that come up on the confines of the CBA, and not Mr. Ives. So having Mr. Ives there as the surehand, who has been our labor counsel and is familiar with our CBAs and has negotiated them before, having Mr. Zelesnick there as well with respect to his management of HR, it was a team approach, it has yielded great results this year in labor and HR management. It is unfortunate that we end up spending more than we originally anticipated, but, you know, but the results, you know, we got value for it.
So three years ago, we got good results with Mr. Ives, so also without Mr. Zelesnick. Zelesnick, I'm sorry. I was going to say, it's a mistake. Zelesnick. And I hope he did a great job with grievances, you know, I don't know his stated work, when he presented to council with some other pieces of work that he came to us, it was slopping. I would not have asked him to come back, I would ask for another representative, frankly. I'm glad you're here today, because then I'm glad that we're having somebody new, because that was one of the things that would, that I would have stated publicly. And I'm not sure, Mayor, how he would have thought that having him go to all of those labor negotiations wouldn't have had the contract be more than the contracted amount, and so much more than the contracted amount. I mean, the amount of hours that he must have had must have been outrageous for it to be so much more.
Well, he generally was here on Wednesday, and most of the labor negotiations occurred on Wednesday, so I was under the impression that this work was being done within the confines of his time period. I was not aware that he was exceeding time to this degree.
Okay, so then asking, you know, your company needs to use, using us in the middle, and we can't...
I will just put it this way, I'm prepared to do that. You know, I did the number, the number that Dennis talked, it was like 34 or something seventeen, we'll take that off, we'll leave it. And I'll tell you, on the next, if, if we get a chance to continue to perform and turn this around, it won't happen again. I'm a big boy, Melissa's a big boy, I've...
She's a big boy.
No, she's not. No, she's not. Obviously. I made a pronouncer or something like that.
That's okay. That's all right.
We can move on to that statement, but, you know, we acknowledge that we should have flagged this issue for you. It's not enough to just, I hope you realize that you get in the, you get put in the middle, you're just doing stuff, and it doesn't make it right, just how it happened, and I'd like to move on by it. Do right by you guys, so.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Wise?
And, Miss Wise.
One concerns me is twofold. Number one, the billing coming from you. But number two, the lack of controls in administration. Because that also should have been caught at the other end as well. Because the setup, our system, saying, "Well, you're here on Wednesday. We negotiated it on Wednesday", doesn't totally cover it because obviously, it was more than just Wednesdays involved, which means there was more than just contract negotiations involved in that overall. And that's almost double the contract. And you end up, if we don't have good internal controls, with a company that we've contracted with being put in this position. So it's two-sided. I have to be very honest with you and I appreciate your honesty. You guys didn't catch it at your own, but I also think we need to have better controls, obviously, on this stuff so that we don't override these contracts. And then you come to council and say, "Hey, I need thirty-four thousand dollars more to cover additional work that I decided I wanted done, or I wanted rolled into it, or I thought was good, or I thought would save us money," instead of getting prior approval. Sometimes, just asking for the approval instead of deciding you can overspend is probably a good thing for all of us. And I recognize you have said you didn't think you were overspending, but that goes back to a lack of internal controls.
Okay, thank you, Miss Wise. Mr. Rupp. Thank you for coming in this evening. I, too, bill time. That's how we make money. We sell our time. So I understand the position you're in, but I have a few questions for you. First off, at what point, if you look through your billings, did you hit that forty-eight thousand mark?
I can't tell you exactly unless I go through every single time entry. And I've got them all right now.
Roughly, like what quarter?
Like September.
That sounds right. August or September.
Yeah, I believe that. I had notified Mr. Zalesnik in summer or fall.
He was looking close and if he was gonna, you know, I don't think, you know, obviously, when we put the number out there, it was not thinking you were gonna have the negotiations involved and some of the other things. Like I said, I think on the date, not just on the onsite, I think we're pretty close. In total, it's a little bit more, but pretty, very close. But if you want to control for, okay, what are the reasonable things that probably could happen above that? That's why I think you hit sixty-five. I don't think it's that. I think it's that. Because that gives you, that gives you play if you do have those grievance hearings, those things that can't be scheduled. And the way Melissa and I do it when we've done this type of thing is I would try my darndest. Obviously, with your onsite, you bring the HR that you're doing, you're facing with Chief David A. Sev. I would try my darndest to be scheduling with my counterparts. You need a grievance meeting. You need to extend it, you know, let's kick a time period to get it scheduled on a date. If you guys have a full day, take care of it and do some of those things, predeals, things of that nature. So like Dennis indicated, it was that, you guessed, maybe the late, late summer, early, early fall, right in August, September area. And, you know, at that point in time, I think, you know, red flag probably should have gone up. We should have been like, "Look, if we want to get involved in this, we need a supplemental appropriation. We need to go back to council and get it." And like I said, it's easier, much easier. Some people, some people believe you ask for forgiveness first. I think it's not easy when it comes to appropriated money to give the permission first and then do things.
Well, especially as a direct risk.
Yeah.
We could say no and that's your loss. And we have, we have said to other people for services that go over and above beyond what we're contracted to do business, but I'm a nice guy. I understand Mr. Zalesnik was, you know, asked to load these things. So I am willing to meet somewhere, but, you know, these are invoices from whatever you hear, August through November. Were they all submitted at the same time or were they submitted monthly?
They get submitted the following month.
So it's a.
So the cycle. It's usually, assuming people do what they're supposed to do, get the noise in some time and the accounting department is running down the throat saying, "Sure, where's your, where's your?"
But it's a thirty-day cycle, so. The obvious bill comes, you know, you see where your total billings are to date. That needed to be caught. What was Mr. Zalesnik's billing rate?
I want to say. Do you know what he, what he is on there? Is he counting?
I can look forward here. I don't have that great.
I want to say what it's seventy on the top.
Seventy?
I believe so, but, yeah.
So about an extra two hundred hours then? So, two hundred hours, about an extra twenty-five days. Let's just do a quick math down dirty. Now, I have a question. I have no obligation to answer this, but just to sort of help me. Mr. Zalesnik's employment's terminated. Was that voluntary or involuntary?
No, he chose to move on to another opportunity.
Okay.
That was, that was voluntary.
I, I.
I worked a long time and I've been working with Mike for three years trying to get him out to do this. So I'm like.
I ask because the timing of this is all happening at the same time. So I didn't know if you guys, someone was taking responsibility or accountability for this.
Well, we didn't, we didn't have.
Not in that way. I think that's not.
You know, I mean, it's, Mike left voluntarily. It was something he chose. He came to us and let us know. And he's been nothing but not professional transitioning with us. This is something, obviously, we wish that hadn't happened. And we're here to address the issue, make it right by your end and hopefully, hopefully do that frankly much better. And I think that's why we're here. I can tell you that, you know, we didn't, this, we didn't push Mike out the door. Hopefully, Mike had another opportunity to take it.
Okay, so you became aware of this over on, right around the same time then? Is that when you guys took over his account, saw where the numbers were?
Dennis started, Dennis started notifying us that we were having issues set that to Mike. But it became, it became more of an issue as we reached the end of the year. Our accounting department is like, "Hey, we have back invoices." And then they're calling me and saying, "Hey, you know, what gives are this?" And obviously, I've been doing this long enough to understand, you know, one of the internal controls a public sector employer has, if your finance director is not going to cut a check. So, you know, that's not the best internal control. You want to have ideas for what it is and you want to have a supplemental appropriation going. That's like the backstop, the last ditch effort. And, you know, what's after, some back and forth with Dennis about what was going on. He identified that we could even have money in the appropriation and have to go through council. So I understood. And again, we've been doing this long enough. It's unfortunate we're here, but, you know.
Just one more question.
Thank you.
Floor is open. Ms. Sev.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I do appreciate you coming and having this honest discussion with us to come to some understanding. So I have a couple of questions. I appreciate that the finance director notified Mr. Zalesnik. I'm wondering if finance director also notified the mayor?
I'd have to go back and look, but I do, I copied everybody.
That's your style.
In fact, we need to.
So Mayor was aware of the monthly invoicing. When was our union contract signed? When was that executed? How long?
I would say two were in October, one in November, twenty, and eight sixty eight to seven.
I agree. My colleagues, one more thing. What was referenced. Not only do I agree with what council and advisor said about internal controls for financial reasons, but I also feel that we need better internal controls for, for quality. So the example that comes to mind is what was brought to council on two occasions. I don't know if it was three, it was two, of job descriptions. We're just, had a typewriter throughout the different department directors who are responsible to participate in the collective bargaining. The experience with the unions, labor negotiations, absence. Those job descriptions were woefully inadequate and just, I don't even know, I don't want to say boil it plate. So that type of internal control, which I brought up at the time in public meetings, was also lacking. So we need to understand, have an understanding that what we get from, from the company is quality control, at least coming in. And then it's our responsibility, administration's responsibility before council. I think one of those was even on emergency, you know. And in a manner that it's just a no-brainer, you know. It's looked at, it's reviewed, and it's presented to us in a professional manner.
Just as a process. Do you guys actually adopt job descriptions by?
No.
Okay, all right. You said presented and adopted. I just was like, I was.
Was it that or this? Maybe not.
No, it's a salary range.
Job descriptions.
Okay.
And we've had requests to job descriptions to understand the salary ranges.
Okay, so the descriptions aren't part of the.
No, but we did get to look at that, thank goodness, because it would put us at great risk and exposure. And the last thing I'd like to say is at the last meeting, there was quite a back and forth between administration and council regarding presenting council with budget. Put this to administration, to which we were told not to worry because council is appraised with everything financial. And this is yet an example of where that is natural, where it went seventy-one percent over the cost. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sev. Mrs. Wise.
So what you're offering is possibly splitting the difference?
Yes.
Of about seventeen thousand dollars?
Yes.
So I appreciate that. I appreciate the comment here, being transparent and doing better for us. I'm willing to give the company a second chance with a new representative. I hope my colleagues are as well. I'm sure we have to change.
I think if you were going to do that simple math, you would just change the motion and subtract seventeen thousand from the dollar amount that's listed, which is eighty-two, five oh five, minus sixty-five, five oh five.
I'll do you one better. It should be seventeen thousand, two fifty-two, fifty. Two hundred and fifty dollars, fifty cents. Would that be?
You're wrong, Mayor.
That leaves us with sixty-five, two fifty-two, fifty. That would be my guess, two million and fifty.
So I would make a motion to extend the Cuban resource contract with Clemens Nelson for the period of twelve months, January, February. So this is also wrong, though.
No, no, it's not. This is.
Oh, because this is.
We're gonna deal with next year.
That's right. Another time. January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and the amount to exceed sixty-five thousand, seventeen, wait, should we just gather seventeen thousand then?
Yep. Sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
We already approved forty-eight thousand.
We're changing the amount of the forty-eight.
The amount to exceed sixty-five thousand, two fifty-two, fifty.
Second, a motion by, Mrs. Wise's second by, and Ms. Weiser, if we're discussing the motion. Mrs. Sev, you have a roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sev? Aye. Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion, Harriet. Thank you. Thanks for stressing it out. Thank you. I'd like to thank Mrs. Sev, members of council for graciously dealing with us. We're gonna do that for Rob's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is item E. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy-three, en pending copine ordinance, chapter two twenty, and civil council declaring an emergency. Says this is on first treated. He had this delivered. Okay, so this is on secondary. Yes, Mrs. Wise.
Okay, so I spoke to the law director today. I don't know if we got the wrong version, but I have a lot of impressions. So it's, they're edits. They're not, I don't know, they're like from the old ordinance, from before the order. So I can, I can just go through them very quickly. And I don't know if the law director has the same issue. So in A, where it says regular meetings, regular meetings of council shall be held within the confines of the city property. Didn't we go through this because?
Yeah, but we don't think we made.
Changes?
I think there were two changes, or there were three changes that came out of the last meeting. One was a simple formatting issue, which we tried to address. Second was updating section two twenty point oh two relating to special meetings so that that section reflected the revisions to the ordinance, to the copine ordinance that were made earlier in the year and included the ability to notice those meetings by email. And then the other change that was, that was in two twenty point seventeen, where he indicated that agendas would be posted online and also at a location on the city's website, which is currently identified as that there are motor vehicles and we're attempting to gain that permission. And the thought has been that we're going to continue to try to accomplish that we haven't yet. And if we don't, we'll come back with another again, but we're trying to arrange for the notice to be posted there. Other than that, all of the changes are the same as was in the version that you were presented last month. And I believe the problem last month was that the red line didn't come through on whatever version you were looking at. So we updated, based on the comments from last meeting, and then we sent both Word copies and PDF copies that we updated.
So then I found more changes. So we're not meeting on city property. So we have a bunch of things that refer to that here. Got a bunch of areas. I can go through each of them. I don't know how we want to deal with that.
Well, at this point, it may be better to table the ordinance and we can review your proposed additional revisions. And I can get a version back to you for January second. Get that way.
As opposed to going through, or if you want to go through change by change on that.
I'd like to just hear what we have. I don't have to discuss, I'm just curious about what we have. There's like maybe six changes. Okay, so in A, regular meetings of council shall be held within the confines of city property. So we have to make exceptions. So B, council chambers of city hall. And then if you continue on the next page under C. At least once in a newspaper of general circulation within the city. I don't know if that's still, if the, like, we don't post council meetings even in the high line Friday wrap-up or anything.
I'm sorry, where are you listening?
Under C, down the second page, on the second line.
Two twenty oh one dot, two twenty dot zero C.
In the O N?
Two twenty dot zero one.
C. And then two twenty dot one, oh one, C two. In addition to the foregoing, council's authorized to hold special meetings of the council and committee meetings at a location outside of city hall and or outside of the city limits of time finding any good cause and place. I don't know if it needs updating or not. That would be up to the law director. Then. It's like under two, it says A, B, C, then little D, one, two. The mayor shall compile and deliver. A completed agenda, agenda and forthcoming meetings. I think it should be emailed, just like we changed email to the for the other ones.
Any comments? Yeah, from the last one, thank you. Should it be Vice Mayor? It's, sure.
So, yeah, probably.
And then does twenty one, D, one. Sorry. Twenty dot oh one, D. I'm sorry, two twenty one, two, C two. Does that provide support that we can't hold meetings outside of city hall or in the city limits? Your comment about the two twenty oh one, B, about within the city.
That's what I guess.
You know, I think, yeah, I mean, I agree with you. Just.
It doesn't, it's not worth it.
I just want to walk away. Say discuss. I understand where you're from.
I think there are some adjustments that may be called for here, and if you don't think, I think the publication of this one's in the newspaper refers to the master notice that we do. Because I think Mrs. Thomas does publish that. And maybe what we need to do here is make sure not only that the ordinance reflects, we should be doing, the ordinance should reflect what we do and intend to do, and then we should do the thing that the ordinance actually says. And when it comes to, you know, when we publish something in the newspaper, maybe we take a look at that. We need to take a look at, it's not as soon as this council drafts, well, special meetings of the council, other committees, the locations outside of city hall and outside of city limits. We probably should say regular and special, because there is cause to have them here. And then finally, timing and distribution of agendas. The, what's described here, the one, two, one, two, and three, et cetera, is not reflective of what we currently do or what we generally do. And I think it might be better that we describe what we actually do, if that works for us, and have that be what we, you know, then we're providing those to the public about what we is that we're doing. I mean, the assembly of the agenda has, and has been for some time, something that has worked on collaboratively with Mrs. Thomas, as the board of council, myself, Vice Mayor, and Paul and Dennis off the loop, and all the various department heads who have certain items that are up. If this is generally how we've done this, and if we continue to do it that way, then what we are writing down and saying, this is what we do, we should be doing it the way, we should be writing it down the way we're doing it, or we should be making a different decision, do it some other way and then write that. But what we're doing here, whether it says, I continue as mayor, shall compile whatever versus changing that to Vice Mayor, that either reflects what we've been doing or what I think we're going to do. So I think we need to take a careful look. With that, should we go ahead and table this, maybe we can motion table? And, you know, when we bring this back on January second, or if for some reason after we do the law director, we feel like we need to call special meeting and have this in place before January second, I would prefer the law director then. Well, the other thing you could do, I'm sorry, you could adopt this, so that the Vice Mayor provision will place on another ordinance that occupies two twenty oh one. Have that thing on January second, because I don't think any of the changes that are in here are objectionable to me. I think what you're saying is, there are some provisions in two twenty oh one that are not consistent in practices, and you've got to update those too. So you could adopt those, not worry about having inconsistency between your charter and your ordinances and purposes of the meeting on January second, and not issue a new ordinance on January second that updates two twenty oh one to reflect actual practices.
That sounds fine.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. McCombs. That's along the lines of what I was going to suggest. I was thinking if we did not adopt this ordinance this evening, that it would cause issues with the organization of council at our first meeting in January. So I think adopting this and coming back and correcting anything at that first meeting, I think that would be the best move forward.
As it is, we're going to be continuing to work with the V and B about permitting using site, you know, site there for posting notices. Or in the alternative, working with the landlord where the V and B is, and see if there's some other public place where we could post it or posting such notices, which came up this morning. Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. A simple question, because this is driven by charter and vote. Will it require just a simple majority or some other level to?
We're on second reading, we are passing on emergencies, so we'll need five votes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the side along emergency?
Solely.
A motion by this one, is there a second? On second. Wait a second for Mr. King. Thank you. Aye, further discussion on this, Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. Just a question, so we're approving it, is it the approved provision?
No, I mean, it'll, it'll, provisions that are going to be approved tonight, going specifically to updates to the ordinance that cause the Vice Mayor to be named as the Chair of the meeting in a manner that marries your codified ordinance to the charter revision. We have some inconsistencies in two twenty oh one with present practices, and we'll submit what I would call tandem ordinance at your next meeting to clean up those inconsistencies and allow, as a matter of codified law, for greater flexibility in scheduling your meetings that's consistent with the current practices.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. McCombs. If there's something further, we have a motion. It is on emergency, but this is second reading, so there's no discussion, if necessary, does require passage by law. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good motion, carries, thank you. Next, we use item F, ordinance twenty twenty three dash seventy four, and then the codified, and the codified ordinance, section four fifty two point nine nine, entitled penalty, and declaring an emergency. This is on first reading. It's introduced by councils of all, I don't think the safety committee, I don't know, Ms. Marshall, if you wanted to take the floor on this, or if you would prefer to cut them, or if somebody else wanted to present on this.
How could you break this agreement?
Very good, thank you, Ms. Marshall. Mr. McCombs, will you take the second?
Sure, this is an ordinance that relates to penalties for parking violations that came out of the safety committee. This marks a significant increase in the penalties that will be implemented for parking infractions, and those penalties increase over time for failure to pay. So there's a bit of a hundred dollars if the citation is paid within the first thirty days. That amount jumps up to two hundred and fifty dollars if the citation is paid between thirty and sixty days. And then thereafter, the cost jumps all the way up to seven hundred and fifty dollars, plus all costs of collection efforts. It's, it's worth pointing out that during the safety committee, Mr. Cicero described the arrangement that he's been able to work out with the Shaker Heights Municipal Court for the administration of these tickets. The city's practice going forward will be to file each and every parking ticket with the Shaker Heights Municipal Court. And the city will, the city will get seventy percent of all tickets paid, and the court will retain thirty percent. And in connection with any tickets that go to collection, there will be a collection fee charged at the court on top of the ticket citation, so that the collection efforts will get no cost to the city. Because of our ability to work out that arrangement, this should not be programmed that dents our budget. It should be something that we can do and administer. You know, that would be current, it can expand. In fact, we anticipate that this will become source of revenue until folks in the city understand that their tickets are being filed, and that recognition should create the determined effect we're open for.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. McCombs. Any questions, comments, and this is next.
Thank you. I want to thank Sheriff Ma- Marshall for working this through the safety committee. Because we've got so, we've been getting so much feedback from her residents, and she really is a voice for the people to, to listen and make a difference. And hopefully, that will have a positive outcome, people will look at your things, and it'll just go away and not be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wise.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm not sure if Mrs. Thomas was the one who updated this, but, thank you.
While the members were around this morning, or whatever, on Thursday.
Yeah, and I, so there's something wrong going on with our red line as it is received by the city, because on our system, it appears as it's supposed to appear, and then we saw it wasn't a packet, and it's decimal points, and it's like, it's like an alpha less super. So, yeah, we'll, we'll try to work through that, but thank you, Ms. Thomas.
I just said, I'm lettering letter B, there's just an extra, the word hundred shouldn't be there. In, in black.
Oh, yeah, hundred, hundred. At the middle of the page.
Oh, yeah. We did have a motion to amend. Yes, can we have a motion to amend as raised by Mrs. Wise?
Oh.
Motion by Mrs. Marshall, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll, motion to amend.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Is there a motion, this is on first reading, does it be intentional to adopt it, to?
I, I, I think. So, so most of the.
Mayor. Yes, Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Rogers here, if we can hold that bottom motion here from the Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Right now, we have an inventory of parking tickets that don't reflect our current ordinance modifications. So over the next week or two weeks, we'll be needing a Shaker Court to specifically go over the modifications to our current inventory, that can usually be done by just applying stickers to the citations. If this is round the first reading, that would give us additional administrative time to make sure that our citations are up to the expectation of the court and for the ability to issue with these modifications. Very good, thank you for bringing that up, Chief. With that in mind, then I would suggest we follow the Chief's lead here and build with this being the first reading, see where we are in January, and if it's ready to go, then we can go ahead and vote that on emergency so that we can then implement that. Is there any further discussion on this before we have this first reading happen? And if there is none, then we will say that we've had our first reading, and this will appear on future agenda. We will run to item G. Yes, ordinance twenty twenty three dash seventy five, directing the city codifier to adopt and codify revisions to the charter as adopted by the electorate of the city on November seventh, September third, and declaring an emergency, this is on emergency, Mr. McCombs.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just an ordinance that will direct the codifier to make the changes to the charter and presents to the codifier and the council a redlined version of the charter affecting charter changes, the gender neutrality, the Vice Mayor runs meetings, provisions to the recall provision, addition of the gender discrimination provision, and the use of model nomenclature in description of the departments.
Very good, thank you, Mr. McCombs, and Mrs. Wise.
Yeah, I just have a question in Article four. Where, where does the Board of Election come in here? It keeps talking about the clerk, but I don't see where it says a Board of Election. But when it says it gets filed, does that mean the Board of Election? Do we, do we need to specify Board of Election? Or when you say it gets filed, does that imply the Board of Election? Because I didn't see it anywhere. Maybe it doesn't need to be in that, I'm just not sure.
Section four.
Article four, section one, two, and three. It just talks about clerk, but no Board of Election is ever mentioned. Just talks about clerk, but no board of election is ever mentioned.
I believe that's our corporate council. It gets officially filed at our corporate council, and then the corporate takes it to the board of elections.
So every time there's an initiative or referendum, what we call, do you take it to the board of elections? We haven't had one yet, so. You never get any of those in your time?
I, I think what has to happen, and I think the reason it's written this way is because the clerk is going to certify it. And so the board of election know, board of elections knows that it's getting something that's been certified by the city's clerk. And I know in their process of counting signatures and making sure that the provisions are right.
So if any of those three happen, how does a petition get pulled? Does anything have to go through the board of elections first? That's why I was confused why it always went through the court.
We had one case that it did go through the court.
Yeah. But how does it, what does, what are the mechanics? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if somebody wants to pull it to, let's say somebody wants a referendum, right? So.
They, they got the going petition.
They make.
The petition, the petitions are made out here.
The, the petition, the petitioners usually write the petition, and I mean, if, if a petitioner were coming to a lawyer, they asked on what to do, I think one of the things they would do is help them create language and then tell them to have it reviewed by someone at the board of elections to make sure the board of elections understands what, what it means and says, you know, essentially blesses it.
And then they give it to the court.
Once the signatures are added.
At, 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 at.
Yeah, I mean, in this instance, a petition is different than what we call petitions from office as a standard.
No, that, yeah, that I understood. I, I just thought it, I thought it first started with board of elections. So I guess I'm off the side sort of, of counsel. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Floor is open. Is there a, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy-five on emergency?
So.
Motion by Mrs. Wise. Yes, I agree. This is a motion by Mrs. Weiser on emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, aye, Ms. Marshall. Any further discussion? Take two votes versus on suspension of rules.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
And then the main motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
I'm.
Ms. Weiser.
Um.
Very good motion carries. Thank you. Next item is item H ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eight-six and many ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten to increase the compensation of the vice mayor for the term beginning January one, twenty twenty-four and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency.
Thank you, Mayor. This, um, this ordinance came out of, um, the discussion at our last meeting in connection with, um, there have been increases of the vice mayor, um, as a result of the change in the charter that the vice mayor will be the chair of council meetings. This, um, ordinance would raise the, um, what we refer to as the additional supplement for the vice mayor from four hundred dollars to a thousand dollars annually. Um, it also has a provision that directs the finance director to continue to pay the vice mayor at the current rate, four hundred dollars, um, annually until such time as we obtain an advisory opinion, um, approving this raise as being other than an interim pay raise. Um, if we, um, are successful in getting that advisory opinion, then amounts will be paid retroactively. And if we're not successful in obtaining it, then the amount will just stay at the current four hundred dollars. And, um, we would need to, to wait until another election to make a change.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCallum. Any questions or comments? Okay, well, I want. Earlier this year, around April or so, when they were considering, I believe we were considering twenty twenty-three dash ten at that point, I brought up how it'd been a little over ten years since we convened a committee to review the salaries of all parking officials. We piecemealed out twenty twenty-three ten, now we piecemealed this for what would appear to be an effort at the end of the term. Compensation adjustment was generally prohibited, though there may be grounds here, and that's why we're seeking an advisory opinion. But when I brought up the issue of having a committee, I was told that that would be taken under advisement. And of course, no further action was taken, which is often, that means something along those lines. I think it's appropriate that we, rather than pass this ordinance, that we convene that committee. That we convene a committee to look at all compensation of all the parking officials. It's been over, over ten years since that committee was convened. The last time there were adjustments, um, was with twenty fourteen term. The adjustment being then to the mayor's salary, which has not been adjusted since. A lot of people might think in the community that, you know, the top job in the city, CEO of the city, the head of administration of the city would have had the highest pay in the city. Well, that's not the case in the university house. You might think that this person has, is in the top three, the police chief, and then the fire chief, or put those around, and then the mayor. But that's also not the case in the university house. You might think it might be in the top ten, you know, because you have a finance director who's very skilled, so he's appropriately compensated. We have good people in various department head positions. The mayor is not in the top ten. The compensation. You might think the mayor would be then surely in the top third. And the mayor is not in the top third compensation here in the university house. If you look at the, the pay, the, the gross pay paid to all full-time employees in twenty twenty-two, which is the last completed year, the mayor is seventy-fifth among all full-time employees in the university house. Every department head, every chief, every police officer, every firefighter, the most members of the service department, probably all of them this coming year after the four percent raises. The mayor is in the bottom tier of all full-time employees in compensation. When it was adjusted in twenty twenty-four to seventy-five thousand five hundred and one dollar. In today's money, adjusted inflation, that would be approximately ninety-five ninety, ninety-five thousand nine hundred dollars. We know in other communities that Cleveland Heights, the mayor's paid, I believe, a hundred and fifteen thousand, and the chief administrative officer's paid more, and the second chief administrative officer came up recently. They, they can vote about a quarter million dollars in their budget to two positions that do pretty much all the things that the mayor of this city does.
Point of order, Mayor. We're talking about an ordinance that deals with the vice mayor and a potential additional money. I appreciate your appeal for that, but point of order, we're not talking about the mayor's salary.
About why we should be doing a full study for all parking officials.
And this generated based on a charter review thing that was passed by the voters, which has nothing to do with what you want to do. You can save that and ask council to bring it up later. This is a motion, or a, an ordinance has been presented that deals with that issue. Point of order.
Okay, thank you. This is a request for a midterm increase for the current vice mayor. If, if the current vice mayor is the next vice mayor, is the person who took under advisement and declined to have this process done. I don't know if the current vice mayor will be the next mayor, or vice mayor at this point. But I do know that, that the things that we're describing, you know, when we're talking about, you know, responsibilities on the agenda, I, I don't see where the agenda's going to change how, you know, the perspective of what we're doing or what the respective roles are. The mayor is still going to prepare agenda items, sponsor legislation. Those things aren't changing. It's still going to be a collective and collaborative effort to put together the agenda. And since all of us know Robert's Rules of Order, any one of us could chair this meeting in theory, as long as we review the agenda and review the plan. We're all prepared to discuss these items for should be at every meeting. And if we are, then.
Unfortunately, the charter will.
I have a report right now. Thank you very much.
And you're going way off somewhere.
Well, I'm going to move with reasons why I have a problem with this ordinance. And I thought it'd be better to do it now in this context, discussing it with you here versus in a veto seat. And I think that is why it is appropriate to have this conversation here. And if you don't want to hear this, why, you know, I'm sorry, but this is still all to come. It is about compensation of the parking officials. It is about what they all do around here. So that's all I have for now. Floor is open. Miss Wise.
I move that we approve ordinance two oh two three eight-six, amending ordinance two oh two three dash ten to increase the compensation of the vice mayor for the term beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and declaring an emergency, an, um, emergency.
We have a motion to approve the ordinance on emergency by Ms. Weiser. Is there a second?
A second, Mayor.
Second by Mr. King. Any further discussion on this item? Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, I do think that in the coming year, we should address the salary of the man. But I think that we should pass this ordinance this evening, um, so that the vice man in the next year can be properly compensated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Ms. Marshall.
I also want to share that, um, when this was in the, um, charter commission, that was one of the, um, main issues that was brought up as well, wanting to make sure that if the responsibilities for the vice mayor were going to increase, that the compensation should be increased as well. And if I'm not mistaken, we were advised that we would be able to do that after the fact, if it was passed, if the voters had, um, approved that particular amendment.
I, I was in some of those meetings, and Ms. Marshall would abandon. And I think, I, and was, it was advised that that was something the council could take on. The question of though, that I don't think was addressed then, and I don't think there was any legal opinion on at that time, is whether it could be done mid-year.
Well, I, I just want to clarify. I don't, I don't think this is viewed as a term. I, I think the, um, discussion that was had at the last meeting, that was part of the justice of this ordinance, was that the term of the vice mayor is a two-year term, which is going to expire at the end of this year. Um, it is not known who the next vice mayor will be. If this ordinance is adopted this evening, the pay raise will be in place, um, prior to the new term of that vice mayor. We have said all that in, in an abundance of caution. Um, the council members are in the term. Um, this is not, um, being enacted in, in the manner that, um, correlates to elections, um, of council members per se. And so again, in abundance of caution, my advice is to obtain an advisory committee first to clarify that, um, this is to, to not be a term. If it is being, um, a term, there won't be a raise. And that's by the, the terms of, of the language of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. Floor is open. Mr. Wright.
Just want to make sure the record reflects, we're talking about a six hundred dollar increase to the vice mayor pay, whether he or she will be come January for additional responsibility to chair additional meetings that we have. Um, plus the, uh, additional special meetings. Mayor wants to take a position that mayor's compensation should be increased by six hundred dollars in the future, then maybe we'll take that under advisement. But for now, this is a workload increase for the vice mayor, and a workload decrease for you, um, and we're ready to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. King. We'll take two votes. The first is on the suspension of rules. Mrs. Thomas, you call all.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Next is the main motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Okay, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three, it's titled by twenty twenty-three dash seventy-seven, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended North East Ohio Regional Sewer District management community infrastructure grant agreement for the East Scarborough and Canterbury relief sewer project and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is that project, the sanitary relief sewer on Canterbury and Scarborough. Um, we already have funding in place. Um, there are two sources of funding, both from the Northeast Scarborough Regional Sewer District, an MCIP grant for eighty-six thousand dollars. And then we had the community cost sharing money that was going to pick up the other fifty percent, which is eighty-six thousand. Once the bids came in and we found out that the contract was higher, uh, went back to the Northeast Scarborough Regional Sewer District and asked for additional cost sharing dollars. And this is what this is. I think it's additional forty-five thousand and change. Um, and it'll bring us up to a hundred percent funded, uh, through these two sources. Now, uh, they told Mr. Kennedy, I mean, we have to, it's reimbursable, so we have to pay for it first and then get reimbursed and so on. So I recommend passing this.
Thank you, Mr. Chin. Any questions, Mr. Chin? If not, is there a motion approved on emergency?
Some.
Okay, motion approved on emergency by Mrs. Sacks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wise. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, um, take the role first on the suspension of rules.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Now the main motion.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Thank you. Next item is item J ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy-eight, authorizing the mayor to enter and into an amendment filed out of County, Ohio, for the road resurfacing project of Lawrenceville Center Road, declaring an emergency. This is on first reading. This, this item is with respect to the Lawrenceville Center Road project. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy-eight is more of a placeholder for what the agreement will ultimately look like. A lot of it's going to depend on, well, a number of factors, but one is we've been working with Eric Mack and Nicole English at the county to how this project will proceed. Uh, we're looking to do this jointly with South Yewwood and the county. Um, and the county has offered thus to take on the, the, uh, management of the, of the project. And part of the management of the project would be, uh, handling the engineering. Now, when they go out for engineering, uh, this would be a QBS selection. Now, when they go out for engineering, this would be a QBS selection, presumably. That would be the first option where, where, you know, the city is working with the county would look to the county to hire a design consultant to prepare the construction plans. And typically, typically with the QBS selection, that's going to be very similar, basically, essentially similar or the same to the process that we implemented by ordinance earlier this year, where we would go out to bid for design engineering. But the we here would be the county doing it and not the city doing it, because it's a joint project between two cities managed by the county. I'm inclined to think that that would be a good idea to have the county go ahead and do this project and take the lead on it and work with South Euclid. But I also wanted to be sure that we were disclosing to the council, you know, the desirability of going in that direction, especially in light of newer ordinance that has been passed with regard to bidding, because instead of us handling the bidding process here, we'd be looking at the county. But then another piece of this, which is key and we need to weigh in on, is if we are inclined to have the county manage the project. And the likely way that they would do it, one way, the general way that they would go about it would be to do the QBS selection. There is also a request by South Euclid, or some desirability on behalf of South Euclid, that their engineer simply be the one that's chosen to do. And if the parties agree to do that, I think we could waive that and ask for the county and let us, it could be used on this project. But this is something where we would have to agree with, and, you know, not necessarily asking tonight for a vote on that, but for some general feedback that I can take back to the county on a couple of points. One, whether we're fine with having the county manage this project, which I do think is beneficial. And two, our feelings of going out to bid for the engineering, the design engineering on this project, you know, to the community generally versus South Euclid and things that kind of say there's being the engineering potential on this project. This is what we think.
I have a little question.
Yes.
It's going from Fairmont to Cedar. There's no South Euclid there.
Our part is. But then, but then the South Euclid lanes of, of, of Washington Center Road are also being, our part in our city is that part.
Oh, you're saying it's continuing until they make it there?
Yes, yes. Now, part of it was done earlier this year. That's, those are lanes that are in the city of Cleveland Heights. So, so if you're thinking about where on Warrensville Center Road, some work was done in the south of Mayfield heading towards University Heights, those were Cleveland Heights that they were doing this year. This is for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which means this could start as soon as July first, coming twenty-five. And that will include the project, our part in our city, the part in South Euclid, so that all of Warrensville Center, basically from the Mayfield general area, maybe Joe may have some, his community would have some additional detail office. But it's, it's a larger project if we combine the South Euclid and all the southern.
So, part of South Euclid was done already on one side, part a little bit of Cleveland Heights was done. I mean, there was one section of South Euclid that was done. But also, what year was our part of Warrensville, it wasn't that long ago. I feel like we did Warrensville.
Let's be straight.
It, it, it's been a number of years since we were in service with Warrensville Center Road.
Okay. And then what are you doing about those bump outs? Are they in saving up?
It's all part of the design process once we get to it, yes.
Do we have a say in that?
Yes, we do, yes.
And what's your feeling on that?
Well, you know, I think the mid-block crossings were an interesting idea, but, you know, I think that there may be way to give way here on this, especially after the, the traffic study we had done. Where we're looking to do the road diet, we want that to be part of the design from Sillsby down to Fairmont Circle. If we're dropping a lane in each direction, adding bicycle lanes that are perhaps parkway protected, it probably makes more sense to lose the mid-block crossings at this point to have a more consistent flow right there and not to cramp up those areas where we could potentially have parkway protected, using that parkway, parkway protected bicycle lanes. And one lane in the stretch at the turn, you know, because then that mid-block crossings is a way to catch a turn.
I thought they were supposed to talk about the border. I mentioned that.
Yeah.
That's what I would like to see, but I didn't even get into discussion. I'm just like, does the city have say in any of the design? I know that Ryan has mentioned many times in the past that it's unsafe to bike on Warrensville the way that it's set up right now. Many, many of you guys have mentioned that.
I would agree.
You don't agree?
I agree.
Yeah, you don't. I know that other people, I don't remember, I'm trying to remember if it was like a county meeting I'm in or something, mentioned the boulevard, like what kind of say do we have in this design process?
I, I do think we have some say. To go back to your question, South Euclid and University Heights most receive the WAC grants for this resurfacing of Warrensville Center Road, separate, the WAC grants, but it's the same road in the same year. And that's why we approached the county and the county said, well, maybe, because it is two cities, you know, and it's the WAC funding, which is 80%, they, they said they could manage it for us. And the other part of that, if you finish, they would pay also 60% of the design fee. And the city would then only be responsible for 40%. So it's 60, 40 on the design, it's 80, 20 on the construction, but the county picks up 10% of that. So we only have 10% then, plus the 40% of engineering, if we let them manage it. Now, do we lose some control when they manage it? I think we do, but I think we still have a say at the mayor, I think we will have a say in the end table, but we're dealing with federal dollars and the county highway. So the county does have to approve it.
All I'm saying is maybe to keep in mind, and this is just my opinion, there is a boulevard in the South Euclid part of Walmart already. And I obviously can't have a boulevard by the Whole Foods area over there, but you really can, and especially if we're strategically thinking that Warrensville, you know, all two family houses are, we might reimagine that zoning differently. We need to really think how to beautify that and how to, you know, what that's going to look in 10, 20 years. I don't know. I mean, the other thing to think about is, I know that when I drive to Auburn Green Road right now, and a lot of people might not agree with me, but it's really congested when they need it six or seven minutes. I mean, it is.
There's also a boulevard in Shaker on the other side of there. And I don't remember this, but back in, it's what it used to be. Was it Boulevard Street way back when? And you didn't go through the circle either, in Fairmont, you went around. And that was changed over the years, taken out and paved, and then you go through the noob. I think we, we could come to the table with that. I can't say that we could force our way, but I think you should have some say. You do have some cash in there, so.
Yeah, I mean, we do have some say. And, and some of the things that we really have, the things that would be a little more, a little less costly because of the adding a boulevard, you know, for the better part of the block. We're talking about, you know, basically adding two curves. And then that also limits, you know, some of what we would do striding law, when it comes to bike lanes or for something else. And it does, you know, for, at least for, you know, current purposes, it doesn't reduce the, for people who would turn into those driveways, they would have to basically U-turn and come back and go in, which, you know, we have not studied that, we have not spoken with residents about it. And maybe something where we would want to have a public hearing with respect to, especially people who live on Warrensville, the people who are using Warrensville, we all need them. For, we'd really like to see them, you know. I would love to see, you know, if, if, you know, money wasn't, like, moving the curves out to create larger tree lines, with actually tree line ones. That would be good and, and, and still be functional, not having a boulevard in the middle, because you would have this tree lined street. And, and, you know, we, we still have a lot more freedom with regard to lane configuration when it comes to whether to create a protected bike lane or, or something else. It's a lot easier for us to take out a couple of mid-block crossings than to, when we want to try something else, to take out an entire boulevard. It's a very expensive proposition, put it in, and, you know. But I think it's worth having those conversations. Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, quite a few comments, questions here. Help me to understand what the project is. What, what, did you do a study already, or did you do some type of preliminary work to put together a budget?
It's a resurfacing project.
So just like a-
It's way at scope right now.
Okay, because I, I heard road diet, I heard other terms being used to describe this project. So is it just, I think a resurfacing, I think, is the whole of itself. Scrape the layer off, put a new asphalt town. Is that what this is?
I think that's the way it's scoped with the WAC. We did do a road diet study on there to see if we can't deal with less lanes and more room for parking and/or bike lanes. And we did prove that if we had the study from Sillsby down to Fairmont, you can do it, but from Sillsby to Cedar, you cannot.
So is that a part of this project, the road diet?
We have to have the scoping meeting with the ODA. And it can, because if we go in there and just ask them, and we don't have a study, then they, they will say, well, where's your study? So we do have a study. It can be part of the project once, once it gets going. And we did present that to the county, that we had, had the study done.
Okay.
But it's not part of the scope now, or the, or the budget now. Doesn't mean it can be amended.
Okay. And I ask because this could just keep going. And if we're going to spend money on Warrensville Center Road, let's do it right, let's do it right the first time. We have a scope to do whatever, put it in the scope. I want to read what the scope is. But I do want to be careful and cautious of the road diet, because as we are looking at the Warrensville Center Road component for zoning, so many things came up with, whether we do parking on, street parking, overnight parking on Warrensville Center Road came up. So we just had our first conversation with that. I mean, it's in its infancy. And I imagine to put that in later would be quite costly. So I, I, I really want to get my hands around what this project is, what its scope is, and what it could be, because perhaps we do something else, whether it be a boulevard or so on and so forth. But without knowing really what the scope is, I know the road needs to be done. I have no, I have no problem just resurfacing, but if we're talking about other elements here, like road diet, I'm not interested until we know what we're doing with regard to the zoning Warrensville Center Road district. And if it's just resurfacing, I'm fine with that, but I want to know what the budget is. Then I want to go on to talk about cooperation here. I'm a little confused, because Mayor, you mentioned that, I don't know how you, I can't remember how you said it, that the county would be responsible for the management of the project, but it's the city who still would do the design, correct?
No.
No. Because that's how this reads here, under cooperation, section D, item two.
Well, right. If you're looking at the ordinance itself, the ordinance is basically a placeholder. I also forwarded everybody an email last week that ran over those numbers that you're asking about. Everybody should have this. And it's also in the packet. But it's kind of hard to read, it's very fine, crammed in, in the packet. But this is the email from, I sent it on Friday, December fifteenth, two thirty-three PM, forwarding the email from Eric Mack at the county. There's a, the university has a portion that the overall construction of the project is a two point nine, or excuse me, a three point one nine million dollar project, but for South Euclid, it's a five point oh six million dollar project. And they're anticipating, you know, designing 5% for South Euclid, 230,000. Design for University Heights is 5% of 145,000. And the county would contribute to South Euclid, 238, the university has 87, so then South Euclid would be responsible for 52,000, we'd be responsible for 58,000. These are all estimates, of course.
Okay, so you do have an estimated cost of construction.
Right.
Okay. Because I thought I asked, and there was the one. So-
No act of anything.
Okay, no act, so no act. Okay, you did say no act, but there is an estimated cost of construction.
Correct.
Could we find out what went into that estimated cost of construction?
Yes.
I would appreciate that. Then this agreement here, it's in the packet, I'm sorry, no, this is the ordinance, this would get updated then, to say that the county will prepare construction plan specification.
Right, this was almost just a placeholder. I would not get hung up on the-
No, no, that's not a huge thing to get hung up on, because if the county's taking responsibility for the construction drawings, then it needs to say that, not the city.
Well, clearly, yeah.
We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of responsibility.
I agree, there needs to be a major revision of the ordinance.
Yes, okay. So for the next meeting, will people come back with the update here?
Well, no, I mean, this is for first reading and, and to be held for a while. We got some work to do yet with the county, but I-
Good, because I was going to say with this.
Instead of just taking it off, I wanted to present this tonight.
Okay.
We get a conversation. There's, you know, it's often said, you know, license is the first time I'm hearing something. Every time you hear this, the first time is the first time. This is still pretty early in the process, but there's a lot to be to do if we want to get it done by fiscal year twenty twenty-six. So-
Twenty twenty-six, okay.
Right, which is, which begins July one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, right. So there's still time.
There is time, yes.
Okay.
And there is still time to discuss boulevards versus moving on the curves versus just milling fill versus implementing some part of the road down. These are all discussions we can still have.
Okay, that's appreciated. And then I think since we're having the discussion and you've so outlined that you would like to get the community involved, I think that's great, because as we're looking at doing the zoning, perhaps we do a workshop. Or if, you know, the zoning consultant doesn't want to come, maybe we get our boards together to do this workshop to gather feedback, hey, what do we really think about some Warrensville Center Road? And work that way. So, okay, I appreciate that. I do have some hesitation, though, on just hiring COBANSIC to do this work. I much prefer, after all the work we've done, to do a professional services ordinance that we follow through with that. This would be the, it was a pilot project, go through that QBS process as opposed to just hiring somebody. So I, I do not prefer just hiring COBANSIC. I want to put that on the record.
I anticipate that would be your response, but I wanted to just smoothly say that would be what council members would want. Pretty good to do that. But this is why we're-
Great, great, good.
I just want to add that you're, you're free to do this project on your own, without the county. And South Euclid could do their own project. The county's only going to get involved with its two communities, because otherwise it doesn't make sense to them.
Right.
But then you don't get their 60% of the design and then another 10% of the construction. It's an 80, 20 split on construction from the WAC. The county road, the county says we'll step in and take 10% of that and pay 60% of the design.
But can you back up a little bit? If we manage the project?
Yes.
What's the split?
Eighty, 20. And you pay 100% of engineering.
And if the county manages it?
They pick up 10% of that 20 of the construction, so, and then they'll pick up 60% of the design. So there are advantages, you lose some control, but there's advantage. But you're, 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 you can choose not to do that, you know.
One of the things we want to consider is, is, is while we think about what we want to look like, if we're doing something other than milling fill, we will want to act quickly. Because if we get behind, South Euclid can say, well, we want to go ahead with our project. So, sorry, University Heights, we're going to do it then, and if you're waiting another year or two to figure out what you want it to look like, that's your right, but we're going to go ahead, A, don't want to hold back, and the condition of Warrensville Center Road, their part is, and we're shaping up.
Well, it's still a county group. So I imagine the county funds would be there at twenty-six or twenty-seven or whatever happens.
They're, they're, they're here within the context of doing this joint project for two municipalities. If you do it by yourselves, I don't know if we'd get that.
And they said they wouldn't manage it.
Correct. They said they would.
They wouldn't, as a lot of-
If it wasn't together.
If it wasn't together, that's right. We meant to manage, they said.
I hope that South Euclid understands that predicament.
We're working with South Euclid now. We're just going to keep that relationship there.
Right. Yes. This is actually the way.
But then it's also in South Euclid's best interest to, to get the same incentives from, from the county. Because if they just say, oh, we're going ahead without University Heights, I mean, there's a, there's quite a significant incentive in this way of-
Absolutely.
I don't think that's, I think speaking about it and looking forward to, you know, in a thoughtful, planned, for way, it is both communities. I don't think it'll go against the press.
If South Euclid, if South Euclid doesn't work with us, they also lose their design fees?
Yeah, they'd be on their own, and it'd be the same thing. The county's not going to step in.
So I'll tell you what the problem is, South Euclid is just resurfacing. So they don't care about University Heights.
They are not going to do any bump outs or any boulevards.
All they need to do is they're on-
Millenfeld.
So they don't really care about University Heights. So we actually do have a little bit of pressure that we need to-
Little bit, yes.
Okay, great.
All right. I think I've got what I need to continue the conversation with the county. But if there's anything else that I would like to bring up at this time, this is why.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
What committee would this go into?
It's an important enough thing. I, I might, I might suggest we do the whole. I mean, we could do a whole set of rules. We all have a statement.
Just even on the, how to go, it's a, it's a good thing.
It is. Well, thank you, thank you, everyone. If you have anything else to speak about, you can help.
It's a good question.
All right. Letter K, ordinance 2023-79, reappointing Luke McConville as law director effective January 1, 2024, declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Who, who about to take this one?
Well, Mayor, briefly, this is your incentive reappointing for the three-month period is to allow council to intitiate this stuff to find a new law director.
Very good. Thank you. I'm very good, and thank you for providing that information. Is there a motion to approve emergency? A motion on emergency by Ms. Marshall, is there a second? I'll second, seconded by Mr. Cody, and discussion. Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. I'm just dismayed that Mr. McConville has submitted his resignation, especially after the exchange at the last council meeting. And also exchange at many exchanges in past meetings where he has rendered a legal decision for our city, which was publicly refuted by the mayor. And I worry about that. And I, I, I hope we'll be okay moving forward. In that, and that the mayor will accept legal opinions from our legislative branch of government more in the, in the, in the spirit in which it's provided, the professionalism and spirit. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Sacks. And I think you bring up, whether you meant to or not, an excellent point. You know, legal opinions aren't supposed to be from the legislative branch of government. They're supposed to be for the city. I mean, if you view the law directors being city council's lawyer, that's part of the problem.
I didn't say that.
While you're talking about legal opinions from the legislative branch of government, those were your-
I'm sorry, from the judicial branch.
They're-
I meant, I meant judicial-
Shaker Heights Municipal Court.
He's the law director and we have a prosecutor. I, I apologize, I meant judicial branch. But there's also problems with the legislative branch. I, I changed what I said.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping me clarify.
Yes, I don't know what to say now. But, but yes, the judicial branch of the government of University Heights is not the law director, but it's the Shaker Heights Municipal Court. The law director does operate their decisions, he has his opinions. Yes, thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Yeah, I just, I would like to mention that whoever the vice mayor is next month will have to expeditiously work with the clerk to get a advertisement to hire a new law director. And council needs to be aware that they need to be available for interviews. And on top of that, we have a rushed budget process. So there will be a lot of meetings in the next three months. I would hope that whoever the vice mayor is will invite the mayor to participate in those interviews. But everyone will have to make themselves available to not just law director interviews, but to the budget making system.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the side? We'll take two votes, first on suspension of rules, Mrs. Thomas.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion, very good. Thank you. Next is Item L, ordinance 2023-81, acknowledging and accepting the appointment of Michael E. Cicero as prosecutor and assistant law director, authorizing a contract compensation. This is on emergency. Mr. Coleman.
Yes, Mayor, this is the ordinance that wanted to appoint Mike Cicero as city prosecutor for an additional two-year period. I think the chief of police will echo that Mr. Cicero has a very good working relationship with the police department along with the Shaker Heights Municipal Court. It's brought a lot of expertise to the position. And as your criminal attorney, I recommend his reappointment as prosecutor.
Very, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Uh, Mrs. Wise.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say that in my eight years on council, Mr. Cicero has been the most available prosecutor. He is a professional. Happy to make a motion on emergency to appoint him for another two years.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. Wise, you have a motion to appoint him on emergency to approve this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Wise, or any further discussion? Seeing that, we'll take two votes, first on suspension of rules, Mrs. Thomas.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
A very good motion, very good. Thank you. Next is Item M, ordinance 2023-82, reappointing Kelly M. Thomas as clerk of council effective January 1, 2024. Depending on emergency, this is on emergency. McConville, you want to take this one?
Uh, sure. I really don't know what the city would do without Kelly Thomas. And so we're asking, recommending another two-year appointment as clerk of council. Now, Kelly's role and work speaks for itself. I think everyone on council will agree how indispensable she is. And this ordinance is before you to make another two-year appointment.
Very good, thank you, Mr. McConville. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on emergency? Some motion, man. Motion by Mr. King on emergency, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sacks, any discussion? Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Kelly, for all that you've been through. Truly, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Cody. Mrs. Wise, please.
Thank you, Kelly, it's getting better every year.
All right. Ms., Ms. Marshall.
I know that I haven't been on a city council that long, but since I've been here, I've observed her working very, very hard on above and beyond, and I appreciate it.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Marshall. If there's anything further, Mrs. Thomas, you call it all, first on suspension of rules.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion, very good. Welcome back. Thank you. Uh, Item N, ordinance 2023-80, authorizing the mayor to enter the transportation services contract with senior transportation connection and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. This is, it's that time of year again, we have transportation connection, senior transportation connection backed up for another year. This last year, we had about $14,500 approximately in ridership, so, so, you know, if we thought and, and we're sure that we can keep it under $15,000, we wouldn't have to bring it back here to you, but there's always the possibility to cost a little bit more. There are some small adjustments here that were in the packet, but generally it's very similar to what we've been doing. And one thing that we did send out late the day-to-day, there is a section four, a section where the $20,000 cap is removed. We put that right back in. I mean, the idea wasn't going to be open-ended, but initially the $20,000 was taken out because we only spent $45,000. But we could approach 20, the thought here, and then with the distributed provision, was to put 20,000 back in and authorize up to $20,000 worth of rights. So if this needs your approval, I would be happy to accept a motion to approve on emergency.
Some.
Good motion by, Mrs. Weiser, is there a second? I'll second, seconded by Mr. McC. Mrs. Wise.
In section 10, what changed from after?
Section 10.
I couldn't tell because it was highlighted, but-
Yeah, this, to me, was one of the substance. I think the insurance all is all the same.
For why?
Yes, it's more just updating the bridge, we've prepared the contract to maintain the insurance.
And they kept the gas rate the same even though gas prices went down? Was that the fuel charge or whatever? That's a, that was something like more, take that with three times less.
Uh, yeah, it appears to be the same, yeah.
Is that ever so?
Well, negotiated base rate assumes a fuel cost out of $0.375.
So shall that exceed as the cost of fuel decreases? That, that added alone is some pressure. But solar rate sale being not to exceed?
Uh, well, no, I think it, I don't know about not to exceed, but-
Add that $3.375.
Add a little.
Add a little.
Right, I mean, the, the fuel surcharge only takes in like, bill those $0.375, and the others account them. That's, that's to be, well, it gives a citation of what the bill is.
So if the monthly average exceeds a base rate, the fuel surcharge per trip will go to one penny for every one penny above the base rate. So essentially, it would cost gas.
When it goes up.
Goes up, you match a penny. If, if it's below, then it's matched at the same time.
It's below the base rate.
Right.
Any further questions or comments? If not, there's a motion for, I'll write and take two votes. Is there a second? Oh, I didn't think there was a second. Yes, I think, yes. Uh, Mrs. Thomas, you call it all on the suspension of rules.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And then the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
A very good motion, very good. Thank you. Next is Letter O, ordinance 2023-83, authorizing transfer of funds from the general fund 100 to the community improvement corporation, CIC Fund 800, and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, Mayor, this $25,000 on transfer was included in the original permanent budget for 2023. And at the last CIC meeting, we had, a week or so ago, the board asked this transfer be put on the agenda at this meeting, so it will be posted prior to the end of the year.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions, Mr. Kennedy? Comments? And if not, is there a motion to approve on the-
So with emergency.
Okay, a motion to approve on emergency by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sacks, any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we'll take two votes, first on the suspension of rules.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And on the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion, very good. Thank you. Next is Item P, ordinance 2023-84, authorizing advancement funds from the general fund 100 to the street maintenance fund 200, university square tip fund 240, and capital group fund 400, declaring an emergency. This is on emergency, Mr. Kennedy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. These are advances, which are basically loans from the general funds, other funds. So for the street maintenance fund, we need roughly $580,000 to cover the expenses related to the C-Road resurfacing project that we have not been reimbursed yet from either ODOT or from City of South Euclid. That reconciliation, according to the information I received from the city engineer, will not be finalized until sometime late in the spring next year. So we need to have a positive fund balance at the end of the year for audit purposes. So as soon as we get that money coming into that fund, based on the final reconciliation, we will come back to council and advance that money back to the general fund. There's also two smaller advances, one for the tip fund. It's $35,000 that we will recoup when the first half settlement to the collection post next year. And because of all the vehicle purchases that weren't in the original budget for the 400 fund, we need roughly about $9,000 transferred into the capital fund to cover the negative balance in that fund. Those will be repaid. The capital fund, as everybody knows, is funded primarily by 5% of income tax collections. So we'll come back early in the year once we get the money for 100 fund and answer the advance back to the general.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? And if not, is there a motion to approve on emergency? Some, motion to approve on emergency by Ms. Marshall, is there a second? Seconded, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any discussion? We'll take two votes, Mrs. Thomas, you call it all on the suspension of rules.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
We'll take two votes. Mrs. Thomas, we call it all. On the suspension rules.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion, carries. Next is Item Q. Ordinance twenty-two-three dash eighty-seven, many of ordnances twenty-two dash sixty-nine, authorizing permanent final twenty-twenty-three appropriations, current other expenditures in the city of University Square in Ohio for the period commencing January one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending December first, twenty-twenty-three, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, this is our final appropriations for the year twenty-twenty-three. These will have to be filed with the County Budget Commission sometime within the first week of January. As I said in the briefing memo, we're significantly under budget. These are to provide necessary appropriation levels to cover expenses over these last two weeks, most specifically, we have one more move involved, that's due on December twenty-eighth. And I want to make sure there's enough appropriation to be a cushion for all the payroll expense. We're also processing the retroactive pay increases for all the service department personnel this week. The net effect of all these changes, there are some reductions in there for things that I don't think we need prior to the end of the year, but the net effect on the entire budget for all funds is twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions, Mr. Kennedy? And if not, is there a motion to approve on emergency?
So, with emergency.
Motion to approve on emergency by Mrs. Wise. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wise. Is there any discussion? We'll take two votes. Mrs. Thomas, we call it all.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good. And on the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion, carries. Next, we've already addressed Letter R. So, the R S' is motion to approve twenty-two-three dash twenty-four tree pruning removal bid from Park Street, the best of those bid, the amount, the amount now should exceed forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and enter the contract with the same. Mr. Pennington is not here today, but there is a memo in the packet. We have used Park Street before. As reflected in the memo, they have professionally performed previous successful tree pruning removal contracts throughout the history of Ohio, and is recommended by our city representatives, and therefore, Mr. Pennington is recommended the award of the twenty-two-three dash twenty-four tree pruning removal contract, Park Street, in the amount of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Is there a motion?
So.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Sacks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. King. Any discussion? Sid Dunn, Mrs. Thomas, we call it all.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And on the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And on the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?